To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We do have a quorum. We do need to adopt an agenda. Anybody have anything we need to add to the agenda this evening?
The only thing staff has, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate, sorry about that, I appreciate it. It was not in your packet, but we did receive a memorandum random from the Commissioner of Revenue. That hard copy has been provided to each board member as well as our supervisors elect, so just wanted to point a privilege to point that out.
Yes, sir. Anybody else have anything to add? Well, it's a pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. As always, general public comment. Any general public comment? All right, we're gonna do it again at the end. We do have a consent agenda. We've got minutes from 11:12 2025. We've got supplemental appropriation number 15, which is for 274-738-72. And then we have a supplemental appropriation number 16 from Parks and Rec for 14,890-69. Anybody have questions, comments, or a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, my only comment for the general public, the only one that affects their fund balance is the 14,890-69.
Yes, sir.
That has to come out of fund balance. But I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion's made and seconded.
Point of privilege, are you speaking of supplemental number 16?
Yes.
That's a use of contingency?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, motion's made and seconded. Further discussion?
I will make a comment. I really shouldn't. I mean, I looked at that repair bill, and it's just typical. I mean, it's really just, you can't afford to buy equipment, you can't afford to even repair it anymore. We had green paint plus.
We are looking towards other vendors who may be more cost-conscious and service-oriented.
Sounds good. Anyway, just wanted to make the comment.
It is a problem. I agree. Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. No special appearances tonight. Mr. Cave, come tell us about your livestock ordinance, and it will be 2025-9 if passed.
Good evening, board members. So, just as the ordinance says, prevention of livestock running at large on highways. It shall be unlawful to allow livestock to run at large upon public highways. That's all we're asking. Because now, with nothing in place, that's all we can do, is ask and try to take care of the problem, keep your livestock out of the roadway. With majority of the time, it is due to poor fencing. Nothing in place, that's all we can do, is just ask them, try to take care of the problem. Lot of time effort when animal control's tied up out there, deputies, sometimes animal control and deputies. And again, we're not targeting everyone, just the repeat offenders that fail to keep their livestock out of the roadway before someone becomes seriously hurt. And we're just trying to be proactive on that. I will give you example, October the 16th, there was an accident where a vehicle burst versus a horse. And now, for the record, we've never had any reports of this subject's animals getting out. I just wanted to use this as an example. Thank goodness the driver was okay, didn't suffer any injuries. If they were driving a car instead of a F-250 pickup, it could have ended very differently. So, that's where we're at, we're just trying to get something to try to enforce them, try to take care of the issue.
The main feature of this, long and short, your livestock gets out three times in 90 days. The third time triggers the $100 fee.
The ordinance has drafted, gives discretion.
Very much.
I will say, you know, we looked at that, discussed that in initial draft, that is part of the packet documentation that Mr. Cave, Mr. Cave, Mr. Wright and I have met about this on multiple times. He does have the discretion, just like an officer has a discretion when he pulls you over for speeding. I think our chief animal control officer is of the character that we know acts of God occurs for fencing. If we have examples like one that's in your packet where it's just over and over and over again, where there's no effort, then we do have to do something from a public safety standpoint, because that's what it's all about. You know, you can have folks get hurt. We know things happen. Greg's not gonna be out there if this were to pass one time, and you've had a boar out and you're getting a $100 fine. This is really for, you know, situations where if he's worked with folks to keep that out of the highway, and it's just not been successful, and we've spent, and the taxpayers spent hours and hours of overtime and things that, you know, at some point, it is a property's under responsibility. So, we don't run into that public safety incident. So, we do, again, understand acts of God occur, fencing and things like that. That's not what this is for, those one occurrences, is trying to course correct if there is a need to do so, to keep the livestock from running at large on highways.
Anything else to add?
Just, if you need the legislative history of this, you know, one of the things we discussed also was, you know, making it animals instead of livestock, but we decided that that would be just, would be a whole different can of worms if we started having it be dogs and the like. So, this is where we landed. So, this has been, according to Mr. Cave, this has been a public safety concern. County's been repeatedly encountering, so it's one more tool for him to use to try to address it.
Does that include goats as livestock?
Keep your goats out of the road, Judd.
Oh.
Just because it's your birthday. All right. Anybody else have questions for staff? Anything?
Mr. Cave, that one graph pie chart, just clarify that actually, two-thirds of all traffic fatalities are a result of collision with livestock?
Yes, but that also includes... So, yes, that report says it's 147 fatal animal crashes during 2000, 2002 in nine states. So, 77% of those were deer, cattle, horses, dogs, bear, cats, and pups.
All right, this particular, these stats, do they pertain to Virginia, though? Is that correct, or?
Correct, I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that was by the Insurance Institute of Highway Safety.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments before we go to public hearing? All right. To the public, to the public on the livestock ordinance. Anybody? I have talked with the Farm Bureau Board. Anybody has any issue with this? It's just, people need to be responsible with the animals they own. That's that. Any new public comment? Back to the board. We do have ordinance 2025-9.
And I move to approve ordinance 2025-9.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion?
I do, just because Vice Chairman Yao and I were just talking about this. So, we give you ordinance numbers in sequence of when they come in order of the year, but it's also important to put out that this, that would codify the section. So, the section of the ordinance is referenced, Mr. Wright did a good job on that. If you so pass tonight, it will go in Section 6, which is Chapter 6 of county code, Article 201. So, just wanted to point a clarity.
Other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Cave, all business, we've got the draft 2026 RRC legislative programs. Mr. Weekly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You may recall, this was discussed at the last meeting each year. Madison County is part of the Rapidan Regional Commission, known as, some people may have known it, you know, as Planning District 9. But there's a legislative platform, and each county has the right to have their voices heard. So, a lot of that is a carryover from a previous year. If there are still items that counties have shown concerns. So, the draft agenda, or excuse me, the draft legislative platform was provided to you. In addition to that, and Supervisor Jewitt may want to speak to it, there were some good efforts put forth from Supervisor Jewitt and Commissioner Smith. I think we talked earlier at our EDC meeting to try to address Senate Bill 974. So, if you have any questions for the current platform, please let me know. Mr. Monty cannot be here for this meeting. He would only be available sometime in December. I don't think that changes, unless you have super changes or questions about the agenda. A lot of it's, like last year, please don't usurp our local zoning authority, because a lot of those bills were attempting to do that the last two or three cycles of the General Assembly. So, but there was emphasis put on Senate Bill 974. And again, Supervisor Jewitt may want to speak to that. He's heavily involved. So, staff is ready to take any direction, or if you want to endorse the platform to include anything additional, whether it's Senate Bill 974 or any other item. I do want to point out, and thank Mr. Wright, he circulated an article, I think it was in the Daily Progress or Richmond Times, or one of those papers, I don't get paid to mention their name. But Senate Bill 975, that was a bill that was setting housing targets that failed last year, and that may come back around again this year. Essentially, the state would say, hey, you know, localities, you need to meet targets. And so, we do not know if it's gonna come. We think it will. But again, this is your legislative platform. We are a part of PD9, but Madison County may have some single issues that you would like to address.
Jim, please.
Yeah, actually, there's some good news on this front with regard to 790, with 974. As you know, we circulated the letter that Jim Smith basically drafted to send to Senator Reeves's office. Mr. Weekly, are we gonna put that in the minutes, copy of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Interestingly enough, just to little back up a little bit, and in September, I was at a Virginia Association of Counties meeting, and I did mention this. And one of the things I brought up were these concerns about 974, and also the fact that we can't assess impact fees for development. And the response I got at that time was, well, just forget about it, nothing's gonna change. Well, ironically, in November, at the state meeting, at the, for the legislative proposals for this year for VACO, they are now including those proposals, including possibility of asking for impact fees for localities to offset development costs. We sent, and Mr. Wright was in a part of this, as you know, doing some drafting to change proposals to the Virginia code related to the Senate Bill 974 specifically. And of course, what we had proposed was, is that the bill had placed the 5,000 population limit per locality as the threshold for mandating that the local planning commission could not approve site plans. The proposal was to increase that to 20,000. At the 5,000 population level, there were only four localities in Virginia that qualified to have that option. If we go to 20,000, it will be 53 localities, which is about half the counties in Virginia. So, we submitted that, and as part of that, not only did we, would we like to see the limit raised from 5,000 to 20,000, thereby Madison County's planning commission could now resume that particular responsibility in the process and allow the public to be more involved in reviewing site plans, even though there is the administrative approval requirement that is part of 974, where you essentially cannot turn down any site plan as long as it complies with the local ordinances. However, it would allow public opinion. 974, right now, doesn't allow that to happen. It's taken basically all local input from citizens out of the planning process. So, at 20,000, Madison would qualify to reassign the designated agent responsibilities back to the planning commission. Another part of that proposal was to increase the turnaround time from the submission of the request of the site plan until approval, so that counties, i.e. planning commissions and staff, would have more time to evaluate the site plan. On Thursday, I received a phone call from Senator Reeves's Chief of Staff, and he had received the documents, and he said, I've talked to Senator Van Valkenburg's office. He was the sponsor of 974 in the last session. And his office said, you know, they're not even interested in talking about this. I said, okay, whatever. The very next day, I got a call back from Senator Reeves's Chief of Staff saying that Senator Reeves had convinced Senator Valke, Van Valkenburg to at least consider our proposals. However, we needed to submit a letter in less than two and a half hours to his office. Fortunately, Jim Smith has already been, who's been extensively working on this, had a letter that was in process, so he was able to finish it up with help from his wife, Kim, doing the proofreading. He circulated back and forth to me and a few other people, and we got it submitted. And on Friday, at a Senate Appropriations and Ways and Means Committee retreat, Senator Reeves was able to discuss our proposal with Senator Van Valkenburg. And this afternoon, Jim Smith received a text from Senator Reeves saying that Senator Van Valkenburg has agreed to consider our changes and possibly sponsor the amendment to this 974, which would be a huge victory for not just us, but all the small towns in Virginia. So, a lot of gratitude goes out to Senator Reeves's office for staying on this, for Jim, for, you know, doing all the background, handing his input on this. So, I guess the squeaky wheel does sometimes get the attention, and we're just gonna continue to pursue this in light of the fact that, you know, this is so important to a community, particularly a smaller community. Folks need to be able to come here and talk, even if we don't agree. A few times ago, on a really controversial issue that we came before this board, I was talking to a citizen, and we were not on the same side. But we got around to this Senate bill, and I said, you know, it's one thing for us in Madison to argue about something, because that's among family. And, you know, let us make our own decision. Don't come from the outside, the state or anyone else, and say, no, you gotta do it this way or that way. That's not the way democracy works. It's not the way we want local government to work. So, I thought that was good news. We'll keep you up to date as how it progresses through the assembly in the first part of the year. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Thank you, Jonathan.
It's encouraging. Anybody else have issues with any of these items that are proposed for legislative platforms with RRC? No action?
No, they're pretty good.
I would, I would recommend action from the board, that you're endorsing the platform to include 974. I think it gives weight, because each county will take their platform to their board of supervisors. And if it so pleases the board, I'd recommend action, so you're officially endorsing the platform.
What would you all like to do?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion?
One comment, Mr. Chairman, and I, this, the RR, the Triple RC legislative program is virtually identical to what the Virginia Association of Counties is proposing. So, we're all on the same page.
Anything else? Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, thank you, Jim. Mr. Weekly, tell us about the tax exempt request for mulching equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a citizen request, Mr. Claflin. I hope I pronounced that right. I apologize if I did not. I was out of the office, asked Mr. Gordon to make contact, so they were aware that we were gonna be discussing this tonight, and certainly they would have a right to address the board. You may recall, a year or two ago, there was the exemption you allow via public hearing for forestry harvesting equipment. Mr. Daniel, our Commissioner Revenue, was present at that time, and went through and kind of gave an explanation on that during your public hearing. Mr. Daniel was gracious to be here tonight. He's put forth a memorandum random that each of you have before you, that kind of goes through that process. We have also included in the packet the information Mr. Claflin wanted to include. I believe a lot of it looked primarily the code statute that was included. Everything was pretty much in the board packet during that public hearing. So, the statute to exempt, I think, some comments that were made by board of supervisors at that meeting about the investment-making in the community. I think, Mr. Jewitt, you were quoted in that, by that exemption. So, I'm not the resident expert. I would defer and request the board maybe call on Mr. Daniel to speak a little bit more about this request. But certainly, if Mr. Claflin is in the audience tonight, if the chair so recognizes, they did make the request to make this formal request to the board tonight. So, Mr. Chairman, we do have the commissioner here that can probably add much more value to the exemption code than I can.
Brian?
So, yeah, I included a memorandum that just did give a brief overview of what took place in 2022, when, I believe the code was amended back in '22 to include at the state level, to give the option for the local level to exempt forestry harvesting equipment. So, again, in '22, our board took action to exempt forestry harvesting equipment, and does specifically state all off-road machinery and tools used in the harvesting of forest products. So, it does kind of capture that specifically for forestry harvesting equipment, similar to the ag exemption, which is specific to ag harvesting, production and harvesting equipment. But, yeah, that's where, so, office policy, we look at the machine, is it exclusive to forestry harvesting operation, and we exempt those pieces of equipment.
Any questions for Brian? Brian, thank you.
Just real quick, though, I'm sorry. Equipment used in multiple lines of industry, so if they use that mulcher somewhere else other than forestry, then that wouldn't be exempted?
Correct. So, if it's a piece of equipment that could be used for multiple, you know, excavation, forestry, et cetera, we would look at it as, you know, not exclusive to the forest operation.
And not paraded.
Correct.
Would you say, Brian, that would be used for business?
Right.
What Judge's talking about?
Everything's, you know, forestry is a business.
Well, yeah.
But it's a business that, by code, by Virginia state code, is given the provisions of exemption.
Right.
In that form.
But just this, using this machine for aesthetic purposes, cleaning miscellaneous, even though it could be construed into the agricultural reel, that would not warrant the exemption, correct?
Correct.
There you go. All right. Other questions for Brian? All right, might as well. Mr. Claflin, would you like to come up and talk to us for a moment?
Yes.
Give us a little bit of background.
Welcome. I'm sorry, I've kind of muddled through this a little bit. I've never done this before, and I'm not totally familiar. I'm doing my best, though, so I appreciate all your patience with me. I don't really know what I'm arguing against. I don't know why that silviculture was not included. And I understand what you're saying, Mr. Jackson, about if it's just for aesthetics, it's not really for agriculture. I don't really have any customers where it's just for aesthetics. It's for forest health. I've done jobs for the DOF. I've done jobs for farmers, clearing fence lines, like, you know, you're talking about things to help people use their land in a way that it needs to be used. And, I mean, I could go through every single one of my customers. And even if you say, well, there's someone making it look better, it's about forest health. It does look better, but the reason we're doing it, I don't know if anyone knows much about the decline of the oak in Virginia and the invasive species that we're dealing with. It's a necessary thing. And one of the reasons that I got into it is seeing the health of the forest in Virginia. They're in bad health, and there's a lot of things we need to do. And exempting the loggers and not exempting silviculture, I think you're losing sight of what it was for. The amendment to exempt was for health of the forest, and you've got to do both parts of it. If you're just doing logging, I mean, I've gone on to logging jobs after the loggers, and if something's not done, the invasive species take over. I mean, the first thing you get is oriental bittersweet, because you've opened everything up, and you get autumn olive, and you get all these other problems. Well, that's where I can come in, and I can help landowners out. So, I'm just asking for the same, to be treated in the same field as the loggers, because I think both are necessary.
What pieces of equipment are you proposing?
I have a forestry mulcher. So, it's a skid steer, it's a bobcat skid steer mulcher. So, it can be used for other things, but I don't. Like, my, 100% of my business is forestry mulching. I have a forestry mulching kit that's on it, and I have a mulcher that's on it. I, of course, have a bucket and a grapple, but I'm using those for if there's big logs, I've got to move out of the way, or something like that. But the majority of my work is for people that are using their land for agriculture and are wanting to clean things up. I mean, even things that aren't invasive species, like the eastern red cedars taking over pastures all the time, you know, and it's something that I could come in. And I've tried to be very cost-effective for people. It's an expensive thing. You know, people look into forestry mulching, and they think, you know, you're making thousands and thousands of dollars because of the cost. But it's a very expensive investment, and it's a very difficult business to get into and do properly. And I've really made the effort to educate people on how to treat their land afterwards and how to overcome the problem that we have, because we do have a problem in Virginia of what's happening to the forest. And logging is not gonna stick around without other measures being taken as well. And I'm trying to be a part of some of those other measures.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
So, I think this isn't more so about your specific use. It's also about people coming down the road in our taxation department, and how do we tax that, those machinery? So, if a GC has one of these, and is just clearing a spot for a house, it's different than what you do.
Absolutely.
Right?
Absolutely.
I guess it's just a clarification for our taxation department to make sure that we tax it the right way. So, what you do sounds agriculture, forestry, like, no issues.
Right.
Somebody else, a GC, who's clearing a space for a house, is using it differently.
Right.
And you don't do those things?
No. So, if you go on our website, because this is, I forget the guy's name that does the, is it the Commissioner Reverend, is his name Brian?
Yeah, he just spoke.
So, and, and we do put things on our website where it says driveways, land clearing. We put that on there because that's how SEO works. That's how we direct people to come to our business and talk to us. A lot of people don't know about forestry mulching. So, and to be honest with you, I get zero business from my website, anyway. But, I mean, that was something that we did in the beginning to kind of create it. If I get someone that calls me for that type of work, my machine's not set up for it. So, I send them to my neighbor, Robert Hoffman. He has an X-reading business. So, we still, you know, we try to make a community with other people and other business owners, and kind of have that to where if he needs someone who has mulching, he can send it my way, and then I can send those kind of jobs his way. But I am in the business of mulching, and I'm in the business of trying to improve the health of the forest. You know, that's something that's important to me. You know, I hunt and fish, and I've spent pretty much my entire life out in the woods. That's why being in here kind of makes me very nervous. But, no, it's something that I'm pretty passionate about. I've talked to the DOF about it a lot. When, my wife is from Virginia, I'm not. And we, when we moved here, and, you know, we found Madison County, which we love Madison County, looking for just property and places to live, it was a mess. And most of the properties out there have been devastated by Emerald Ashbore, and, you know, autumn olive, and all these other things that have happened. And there needs to be intervention, and I'm just asking for the, like I said, the same playing field as with the loggers, to where, you know, I can do what needs to be done here, really. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're glad you're in Madison.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We love Madison County.
Other questions or comments?
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Hey, Mr. Claflin, I appreciate you, am I pronouncing it right?
Yes, sir, Mr. Claflin.
I appreciate you bringing this to the board's attention. So, I'm just gonna do this as a hypothetical. It could be your business or somebody else's. But let's say they're doing forestry, forest management, as say, 50% of their business, another 50% of their business, they're doing, I'll call it landscaping, for lack of a better term, but taking trees down, mulching them all But taking trees down, mulching them on the spot. Would you agree that the forestry management piece, the 50%, you're asking for that to be tax exempt, at least prorated for the equipment? If you're doing it for sort of the landscaping business, that would be taxable at 50%? Like, what's your position on that?
I would say if it's, if someone's doing both, which like I said, I don't do both, I do forestry mulching. You, you kind of have to be dedicated to that. If you're doing it for landscaping purposes, I mean, I, I think that would have to be a, a non-exempt because that's not, you know, it's not the same thing. You know, the, the reason for the, the reason for the state to pass the statute is it's part of a forest health thing. You know, I kind of fall into agriculture and that silviculture, you know, and, and that's where I'm, I'm looking for that exemption, you know, because that's what I'm doing.
Jim, please.
You really have to watch what you say in public, don't you? Because Mr. Claflin was quoting me from a few years ago. But I, I'll go back to what I said a few years ago about the forestry exemption. I, I think this is an investment in our agricultural industry, forestry industry here in the county. And, you know, I would support the exemption.
Thank you.
It does appear, it does appear that if we were to go down this path, we need to hold a public hearing and.
Advertise, advertise it as an ordinance amendment?
Yeah. Anything else for Mr. Claflin? Mr. Claflin, thank you.
No, thank you very much for all your time.
If it's solely used under ag, there's no reason why it shouldn't be. Forestry is certainly a part of ag, once it starts getting into the aesthetic side, the play goes against ag. And that's kind of a different beast. So I mean, it's one of those things you're going to kind of have to keep monitoring, Brian, I'd assume, is that right?
Correct, you know, and first, I appreciate Mr. Claflin's business and I think it's a wonderful business, I have him in Madison County. And that's the complexity of administering this and trying to determine, you know, what's exempt and what's not. Unfortunately, in the business, or, or when you're looking at business property, we don't have the pleasure of proration saying, you know, he uses it 50% or, or maybe not him, just anybody hypothetically, somebody uses it 50%. If it's used in the course of the business, it will be taxed at 100% because there is no code section that would allow proration. You know, again, that's the complexity, and then when we're looking at it, you know, it's, it's what line of business are you in? If you're in multiple lines of business, we have to look at it as, you know, i- if a farmer has an excavation business and a farming business. They use it even once and create income off of that job for excavation. We're classifying that whole, you know, piece of machinery or the machinery, pieces of machinery that he uses as excavation machinery, not cla- we're not classifying or giving him an exemption for his farm tractor. You know, same, same thing for other lines of business. But, but that's, again, just to give you guys a little insight of the complexity of that. And, and that's where we're having to balance that out and really dig into what is that machine used for and.
And there's an economy of scale here, that machine, I mean, he's talking about a, what, $175, $200,000 setup? There's only so many of those Madison County has. I know of about, including yours, I think I know of about four of them in Madison, some going bobcats, some going hoes. But there's only going to be so many of them, so it's not really a big deal.
And then that's, I asked the board to consider, are you, are you using just the attachments? Are you excluding as long as it's used in silviculture activities or exclusively? You know, again, looking for some direction of the board if you guys are.
I would think that the bobcat would go with it just on the basis that its main purpose is to be used solely on that machine. If it starts moving around hardscapes and things of that nature, then we know that is certainly not agriculture and caters all a whole different industry. I would think that you've got to do both sides and classify the whole thing as a forestry mulching unit, which is that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I trust Mr. Cla- Kaplan's, Claflin's testimony on what he's using it for, I agree with that.
Does that sound right, Ron?
The whole thing.
Sure, sure, and again, you know, I'm not looking at just Mr. Claflin's circumstance.
Right.
Trying to envision other circumstances where, you know, again, you have somebody that's using it for grading or. Because if you really look into, there's some tax commissioner rulings, they're more on the sales tax and the exemption of sa- sales tax for forestry equipment. You know, if it's used at all for grading, even if it's to clear the road to access the mill site or logging site. Those portions aren't exempt from sales tax, it's, it's specifically for the harvesting. And so that's, that's again, you know, looking into some of the other, that's kind of a different line of exemption, but similar in itself. That's an administrative code. And again, those are the nuances and the complexities of it, so. But I would hope for some.
I have a tax question for you. This is like trivia night. I bought a cat track loader several years ago to use on the farm. Obviously you can use it in construction too, and I was told at the time. Well, I'm going to tell you that I use it exclusively for the farm work and, you know, field clearing trees, all that kind of stuff, ditch management. But I was told by the vendor when I bought the track loader that it was exempt from sales tax. And that I had to always use it for ag use only, which is why I bought it. And that it had to be, if you wanted the property tax exemption, exemption for ag, it had to be used in ag. And he also said that if I ever did cross that line, that I could be back taxed on the original sales tax amount, is that true?
I believe so, again, that's typically at the state level, but, but yes, I believe that would be, if they discovered that, that, that would, they could come back and assess that.
You're welcome to come out and see what I do with it.
Jim's available about 9:00 AM tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Brian, I just want to clarify that though, because I, I don't know whether that was held indefinitely or just a, a four or five year period, I'm curious. Thank you.
Probably need to have some real action by the board to go to public hearing if this is something we want to add to the ordinance of exemptions.
Yeah, I just want to say before we do that, so to Mr. Claflin, if, I think we're going to, you know, vote to put it on the agenda. But we need, so it'll be at least two weeks to advertise and then a public hearing, so we give the public a chance to weigh in on it. So it's, so, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we, we advance the, the tax exempt request for forestry mulching equipment. To advertise and have a public hearing.
And Mr. Yao, do you want?
Give a second?
Mr.?
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
Got it, go.
I was just, is part of that, you want directing commissioner and county staff to come up with proposals for the, for the board?
Please, for the wording, yes.
And I would just add, while you're in discussion, is January 13th more appropriate to give some time to give this proper vetting and ready for your public hearing? Or does the board desire to have it earlier? I'm just.
Oh, that seems to be a fine timeline and that would be easy to hit. January 13th?
Perfect.
There you go, public hearing. Thanks, Mr. Claflin, Brian. No.
Not yet.
Motion been made and seconded, further discussion here in the, in all in favor, signify the same, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same, so, January 13th, thank you, Hannah. All right. Discussion, Mountain View Nursing Home Permit Renewal, Mr. Weekly, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll give you a little background on how this came to my office. And I did notify some individuals, so if you so choose to call on them, you can do so. County staff and its statutory obligation that permit renewal cycle specifically DEQ when it comes to Virginia pollution discharge elimination system permits, that's a mouthful. They usually are five-year cycles and those renewal notifications are sent to the county and then county staff notifies the board. That's true, there, you know, there's few of these in the county and you'll get these permit renewal comment period. I put that in the packet, Mr. Gordon, who was at the helm on the October 28th meeting, you may require, remember that he did provide that notification to the board. Since that meeting, we had, Mr. Alexander had reached out, had requested to be put on your agenda. He's done very extensive review and FOIA request of DEQ to try to obtain all the facts and so forth that go around. The permit for Mountain View Nursing Home Wastewater Treatment Plant. Initially, I did a staff report and put it in the packet for Friday. I've since had some conversations with Mr. Alexander, so I'm going to clarify in a minute his actual request. I'm also have contacted, when I saw the signature for the, who's responsible for this treatment plan, actually Mr. Al Esch has signed for that permit and passed. And they hire a contracted operator to run that facility or at least manage it, and sometimes there are other operators. So I've, I've talked to Mr. Esch as well as Mr. Clemmons, who's here tonight, as along with Mr. Alexander. So since October 28th, again, Mr. Alexander put for, put forth a request to be on the agenda. And while he opposed the renewal and really challenging the location of the outfall in the facility and the, the compliance thereof. From a staffing standpoint, what I know about it is I did look at the initial information, there's been plenty more since then. So in fairness, the initial information I was looking at was the 2019 DEQ technical inspection. I also obtained the 2020, what is known as the recon inspection report that Mr. Clemmons provided. Because for whatever reason, DEQ did not provide that in Mr. Alexander's FOIA request. So you can see a lot of things occurred in that 2019 report, you can see DEQ's comments in the 2020 report. I went a little step further, I know some folks at the, just based on past experience. When I say I know some folks, I'm not calling favors, I just through past work experience. I contacted Ms. Rebecca Johnson, who is now the water compliance manager, I think she's held that position since 2023. Prior to that, she was an inspector and I believe she has at least inspected this facility, if not the 2019. Somewhere in history, she has firsthand knowledge of the facility. So I wanted to get a little educated, because I have 2019 data, I have 2020 data, but what are you seeing? Because she's over the water compliance manager, now water can be misleading because this is a wastewater treatment facility. Each month, any permitted facility is required to submit a monthly discharge monitoring report, known as an acronym, DMR. So any of your testing that you're required to do gets reported in that DMR, that includes any exceedance of permit. And you are also required as a, the operator responsible for charge, you usually send a letter in with your DMR stating what those exceedances are, the reason for, what you've done, the rectified, so forth. I do know that there are point limits and those are viewed differently if you are a minor facility versus a major facility. This treatment facility is 15,000 gallons per day or .015 MGD. That doesn't mean excursion should be looked differently, minor versus major, I'm just making a relevant to how their point schedule works. Ms. Johnson shared that currently in the system through September, because I know they're usually lagged when it comes to the, the October month. There was 2.4 points in the system, four points gets you to an enforcement, that doesn't mean that they would get there. But enforcement looks like things where DEQ, they could come out and inspect your plant, they could find you, they could require upgrades. It just depends on how severe it is. This facility, they go through a consent order back in, I think, 2006. Years ago, it was a lagoon style treatment facility, I know, Mr. Dawson, you're familiar with Warnton had one of those years ago. So it's not unheard of, but as limits decrease and get more stringent, you have to upgrade in order to meet them. So they did an upgrade of that facility, which created the package plant that exists out there now. DEQ listed that consent order in 2008. So, let me get through here, there were things that I included from a staff report. And again, there's been other things, in fairness, that Mr. Alexander has submitted. I did forward on the most recent correspondence to the board supervisors. What I included in the packet was his letter initially to request to be on the agenda. The 2025 permit reissuance draft fact sheet, where that's important, DEQ amongst any renewal notification period, they give a fact sheet. So they've gone back, they'll put some compliance history in there, they're also, we'll look at the qua- well, water quality data for the stream. Which ultimately this discharge will eventually, if there's enough flow, there's a lot of tributaries in that area that they state in their fact sheet. That it eventually is part of the great, great run watershed, if you will. What's interesting is they have in, I think it's table two, on sheet two, in that reissuance sheet, they, they list it, this is DEQ, not the county, as a unnamed tributary that discharges to great run. I think that what's being contested or questioned is that there is not a stream, it's essentially a pipe that allows discharge from this treatment plant to then discharge and flow onto adjacent properties. DEQ, how treatment plants, if you want to build a new one or just at any point in time, you have to submit drawings to them. If they agree with those drawings and you have outfall location, they give you what is known as a certificate to construct, a CTC. If you build that facility to those approved plans and specs and they're in agreement before you can go online, you have to get a certificate to operate, a CTO. And then they also issue a discharge permit at that same time, which has various limits in there. Flow is one of them and we'll get the flow, I know we'll hear here tonight, total chlorine residual solitaires, there's a whole plethora of things that they require. DEQ is the oversight regulatory body that looks at those permits. While this facility hasn't been inspected in some time, I ask questions on that. Generally, unless there's heavy excursions or something that they feel warranted on site, generally they would do at least a minimum of one technical inspection during that permit cycle. That permit cycle, it's five years, but they do reserve the right and that's in everybody's permit. When the permitee and the purveyor agree to that permit, part of that is right of entry at any time, they can do surprise inspections at any time. But they have oversight. I have gone back and looked at code, I'm going to reference some code section here in a minute, Hannah may want to speak to it. I want to clarify because I did not understand when I put this point together, Mr. Alexander's request was actually not for the board to request a public hearing. Which you can do that or a citizen can do that, and there's three things you have to specify that's in that public notification. It was really challenging the, the outfall location and not being compliant with code. Certainly if you choose to call him, Mr. Alexander Knight, he's very in tuned with the code. We have reviewed the code, there's a couple of things cited there. The provision which he mentions about, the county has a 30-day window to challenge the location. That is found in Virginia Code Section 62.1 dash 44.15 colon 3, paragraph A. To which it's saying, no application submitted to the board for a new individual Virginia pollutant discharge elimination permit. Authorizing a new discharge of sewage, industrial waste or other waste shall be considered complete unless it contains notification from the county, city or town which the discharges take place. That that location and operation of the discharging facility are consistent with applicable ordinances adopted pursuant to chapter 22, this is of the Virginia Code. It's an enabling code 15.2 dash 2200. I've talked to our attorney to really, you know, what is this saying to us? If, certainly if it's a new facility that didn't exist, definitely I think, it's out of shadow of doubt, you have, you know, this enabling statute to question the location of it. Is a permit renewal cycle considered a new permit? It's certainly not a new outfall location, I would say as of today, because it was approved at least back when the consent order and they did the upgrade in 2006. The 15.2 2200 is an enabling statute, it does give localities the right, the oversight, it's called a declaration of legislative intent. That gives it, because you know, you're a Dillon rules state, you only get your rights from the state. The chapter is intended to encourage localities to improve the public health, safety, convenience and welfare of their citizens. And to plan for future development of communities to the end that transportation systems carefully plan, new community centers and so forth are considered in there. And looking at the county code, there's two sections that I found, or I want to give credit to, because Mr. Alexander, I've had some conversations. Hannah and I have had some conversations of. Hanni and I have had some conversations of, what does county code, Madison code say? Chapter 14 of your county ordinances, really, it's reserved solely for erosion and sedimentation control. There's a footnote in there, too, that references, back in, I think it was 2013 or 2014, the county could either opt in or opt out for DEQ's program. DEQ has oversight of our erosion and sedimentation control program. Now, with that being said, if erosion is at issue, you know, if it's hydraulic overload or whatever, Madison County, via their Erosion and Sedimentation Program Administrator, Mr. Suction, would have the right to go look at that. Any financing report would still go up to the enabling body that has oversight, which was DEQ. It doesn't get too specific, I'm gonna say my opinion only. I'm not speaking for Hanni, or certainly any member of the public. It doesn't say, you know, go in and regulate sewer. From an erosion standpoint, I think you could look if there's concerns, because we would do that with anything that causes erosion and sediment issues. But again, that would be passed along to DEQ. That's the only thing found in, I think it starts at 14.19, which is your title, that says this article is intent for erosion and sedimentation. Chapter 28 is your utilities chapter, but it does not get into weeds, other than, if you are building or developing a subdivision more than 15 homes, you must build a public utility that is then turned over. Actually, I think it says turned over RSA in our statute. So that's where it comes in. It does not mean that the county, if you're not as defined, should not care about environmental issues, that's not what I'm stating here tonight. I want to make clear that the request was to challenge the location. There is a 30-day window on that, based on the administrative code found in Chapter 9, that you do have 30, the county has 30 days from the date of notice given. So your time clock, even though we got it, I think on the 28th, it says we got it on the 27th, you have 30 days from then to challenge that location per Virginia Code Section 62.1-44.15:3, to make that challenge. Going to the public comment period, if the county wanted to make public comment, there's criteria to do that, just like a citizen does. The way DEQ looks at that, and that's also found in administrative code, they'll look for certain things. I think there is a threshold of 25 or more people. They'll look for significant information that could trigger them to hold a public hearing. So, long story short, I didn't mean to bore you, but there's a lot of good technical stuff you need to know. The board has some options, and I'd like for Hanni to chime in if there's anything further, but you can provide a public comment, or, excuse me, choose not to provide a public comment, you can submit a public comment, and basically, that would be either you're gonna look to see, can we challenge based on Chapter 62.1, which is challenging location, or not, or you can, you know, request a public hearing. I think the public comment period goes through December 1st. That is all I had at this time from a staffing point. Mr. Wright, if you have anything?
I think Mr. Weekly did a great job. I don't have a lot to add at this point. I think it makes sense to hear from whoever wants to engage in comment, and then I'm happy to maybe say something towards the end of that.
Should we probably go as far as saying that we did not set this up as a public hearing? The board can properly call on anyone. Again, I purposely, because due diligence, I notified either side, because I think it's their right to know. One, we had a citizen made a request to be on the agenda, so I'm being respectful of that, as well as those who are associated with Mountain View Nursing Homes treatment operations.
Do they have any problem with me calling on public?
No.
Before we do that, would you mind going through what our options are again, one more time, Jonathan?
I mean, option one is do nothing.
Right.
Option two is sort of create your own public comment from the board. Option three, I think, is just sort of separate from the public comment, but it would be...
To challenge the location.
Challenge the location. And then, there's probably a hybrid with the public comment, would be a letter to DEQ saying, hey, we've got concerns?
Yeah, we either have comment, including location, or without, or we make no comment. There you go.
And I would like just to add one thing on that, you know, if the board or anyone's gonna have, would have questions, DEQ, one, they're the regulatory oversight, two, they have all the data. So whether you're gonna ask questions on this, or that, or why, that is their belly wick. So certainly, you know, that's one of your options, but, you know, that's why I believe that public hearing, if it was a public hearing requiring, is reserved to DEQ. Not apples and apples, but I'm gonna try to equate, just like you go through VDOT transportation things, that they wanted to have a public hearing on the traffic, proposed traffic circle at Pratt's, there was no public comment period there. VDOT held that public hearing to take that inquiry from the citizen.
Other comments from the board before I go to the public? Mr. Alexander, would you like to start?
James Alexander, Radiant?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Alexander, we are not lawyers. You're gonna explain this to us in a very brief, well-thought-out way, so we can make a decision tonight, right?
I hate to correct Jonathan.
Well, that's fine.
What you're being asked to do, the Mountain View has requested the right to pollute, and they want to do that into what they call an unnamed tributary. As part of that process, DEQ is required to give you, the board, notice, because they know that the state, in the form of DEQ, will do things that are not really in the interest of local health and welfare. So you become the gatekeepers as to whether the location of this type of facility is appropriate, and secondly, whether the operation is consistent with your ordinances, that is whether it's a public nuisance or not. Two separate questions. You don't have to answer both in the affirmative, either one would be fine, right? We submitted that the location of this is wrong, because this is a system designed to throw things into a stream. That's the entire basis of the permit. There is no stream, we made that argument. I did a FOIA request, which took another 10 days, and so we submitted that material, and my Exhibit K contains the comments. This is by the DEQ inspector on site at the outfall. It says, "The receiving stream," what they're calling the unnamed tributary, "has a flow of 7Q10." What that means is, in a 10-year span, the highest flow over the course of seven days is zero. The highest flow over the course of seven days in a 10-year period is zero, and appeared to be a dry ditch, were it not for the facility's discharge. Then later, a report is made where he notes, this is now the fuller report by DEQ, flows in the ditch originate from the wastewater discharge plant, or from stormwater that may enter the ditch. There is no stream. So to put in a facility that is authorizing them to put these pollutants into a stream is just a fiction, a fiction that DEQ has maintained, because they know from their own records that there is no stream. DEQ has a vested interest in this, it's a state entity, they've got 23 people that have touched this permit, 23. Average salary is $85,000 a year. They don't care whether there's a stream or not. That's left to you to decide whether the health and welfare of Madison residents can rely on something like this. So we've shown you proof in their own records, there's no stream. This is just thrown onto the ground, it then goes at 1.4 to 1.8 miles across all those properties, until it finally reaches the Great Run. That property is at an elevation of 640, it's 200 and some feet before you get to the Great Run. So it's a gravity flow over all those properties, and they're polluting them, okay? We're talking what they call solids, human excrement, all right? Discharges of 200, 400 gallons, human excrement, thrown down this hill, onto those properties. No stream, no dilution like that, it's a total fiction and has been maintained that way for years. Secondly, we talked about the operation of this facility, and I said at the time that the 2019 inspection had a notation that in front of the inspector, one of the staff at Mountain View took a sample, because they were gonna do a test, took the sample, saw that it wasn't going to be with inspects, and threw it away, in front of the inspector. And the inspector said, "Why did you do that?" "Well, Mr. Clemmons told me to." Now, Mr. Clemmons is the licensed operator of this, is also, I think, the Chair of the Board of Mountain View. So when he tells a staff member to do it, they do it. They don't have any concern about the health and welfare for Madison County, Madison County, they just throw it away. So there's just total misreporting of things, manipulation of the facts, and when they say, you know, "My gosh, DEQ watches this." One inspection in nine years, they don't watch it. What do they watch? They watch what Mountain View tells them. These discharge monitoring reports, they only come from Mountain View. So if Mountain View says it, DEQ just goes along with it. They haven't been to that site. Your car gets more inspected than this pollution facility does. Then, all the records did come in, so I submitted Exhibit M. And this is after the reconciliation report of 2020. So it is replete with further discharges of E. coli solids, exceeding the chlorine limits, and then you get to repeated discharges. This facility has a process capacity of 15,000 gallons. You know how these process facilities work, you cannot rush it, there's a certain dwell time, you have to put it through and it gets treated. You go through Exhibit M, which you have, and what you're going to see, and these are reports that come out of Mountain View. I suspect them to begin with, because they're self-reporting, and I know that in the past, for years, they just, they would just throw away a result if it wasn't compatible. You're gonna see in 2020, January 2023, 42,000 gallons a day. Now, you might make the old joke of, you know, 10 gallons of crap in a five-gallon bucket, you know what happens to the other five gallons. This is 42,000 gallons coming through a $15,000 process. You can't do it, not entreated. February, 42,000 gallons a day, March, 42,000 gallons a day. This goes on for years. I detailed all of these reports in Exhibit M. So, in my view, what you've got is the location of this type of facility, which is not discharging into a stream, is inconsistent with the health and welfare of Madison County. That's one finding. But in my view, because of the fact that there is no stream, the operation of it, discharging onto the neighbors, the operation is inconsistent itself. But if you further look at the operating, as the septic system is monitored, it's totally inconsistent with the health and welfare of Madison County residents. So, your job, and it is your job to assess, is this location right for that type of facility? And I submit it's not. It should be a different type of facility, it should be perhaps self-contained, but there's certainly no stream to have the type of DEQ monitoring. Secondly, I think the operation is inconsistent. Either one that you find, and you don't have to find both, you could find one or the other, that it's inconsistent, the effect of that is to say that the application is not complete. And at that point, DEQ has to step back, and then you have to figure out what type of system will work in that location to treat the sewage. That's the primary issue. But you've got all the exhibits and questions?
Who has questions, Mr. Alexander? All right.
And...
Please.
One other point is that this isn't just erosion, okay? You have the power to abate things, all right, under 1434 and different techniques, and you have the power to, you know, abate a public nuisance. This is both a public and private nuisance.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Other public comment?
Mr. Chairman, and I apologize with the attorney's concurrence, since we did not advertise a public hearing, if you choose to call on another party that's here, it may be fine, but I don't know if it's proper, how do you say, treat that when it's overall public comment?
Ask for anybody, members of public?
Yeah, it's public comment. It's the same thing I'm doing. I'm gonna keep doing. Any other public comment? Any other public comment on this?
All right, Tim, come on up and talk to us.
I have a question for Mr. Wright. How is our county health department involved in this?
They're state.
They're not, I mean, they are consulted with the permit. I think somewhere in my board report, I mentioned there were several departments, EPA, BDH, that give these permits to make comment on, there was no comment. Generally, they would get involved, like if you have something with a single-family residential, but generally, they do not touch this, because it's not a conventional type of system. This is a, this has a discharge permit.
This is commercial, so they're not gonna touch it.
Correct.
Tim, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Tim Clemmons, and, yeah, I just wanted to speak, I'm not here to argue with Mr. Alexander. His characterization, his characterization was false. We're not asking for a permit to pollute. This is an ongoing sewage treatment plant that's been there for many years. We do submit reports to the state each month, not all tests done by Mountain View people, they're done by a contract laboratory, and the state evaluates that. I didn't make notes of everything Mr. Alexander said, but we would dispute it. We do discharge into an unnamed tributary that's been there for years and years and years. The plant is monitored daily, the plant is monitored frequently. It, I'm not sure where he gets some of his information, and again, I'm not here to dispute him, but it is chlorinated for the effluent, it's dechlorinated for the effluent, as required by DEQ, and it is in compliance with state regulations. So, again, that's all I'm gonna say. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I do think that it has been mischaracterized to you.
Thank you. Questions for Tim? Anything down there?
I'd just like to ask Tim, so where are you in the renewal of the permit?
We're towards the very end of the process. They're doing the advertising now, which will, I think, as Jonathan said...
Which is the notice we got, yeah.
The other thing I did want to add, Jonathan said something about contract operator. I am the operator for them, I've donated my time for the last 20 years or so. I do not get anything from them for it.
Thank you. Other questions for Tim? All right, thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir, please.
Good evening, ladies, lady and gentlemen. My name is Evans Okerson, I live on Lost Mountain Road. I've been conferring with Mr. Alexander for quite some time, past few weeks anyway. And the question was just, or the statement was just made, that he didn't know where the information Mr. Alexander was speaking about came from. It came from a FOIA request using DEQ documents. This is not something that was made up, this is actually DEQ's information and DEQ documented in their report, that the young man dumped the sample out after he saw that it was going to be poisonous. I concur with everything that Mr. Alexander says. Because it's been there for a long time, doesn't make it right. And I think the board needs to act, if they have the capacity, to make some changes, to protect everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Other public comment? Anybody else got anything?
Steve Carpenter from Radiant. I have, very quickly, two comments. Everybody keeps sour, we keep being told that this is being discharged into an existing unnamed tributary of Great Run. And then we're told from their own document that there's zero flow. So how is this a stream that exists if there's zero flow in this ditch? Second comment, this sounds to me like an erosion situation. Second comment, this sounds to me like an erosion situation. This ditch is caused by the outflow of the waste treatment plant. If at some point there are other streams, other springs feeding this stream, if they have in their own documents said that there was no flow, then clearly, that stream does not start there. So they're flowing on the surface of the ground, creating a waste discharge on the surface. And I don't know about DEQ requirements, but I know from some of the things we've seen with the Virginia Department of Health, they're very unhappy about anything being spread on the surface of the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Can I make a procedure point?
Sure. No, fine. A microphone, so we can thank you.
I'm sorry to say, because of the difference in service dates, your time to make a decision is tomorrow.
Oh, excellent.
Because of the difference in the service dates, and so the 30 days would expire tomorrow. So you would have to give your notice to the applicant and to DEQ State Water Control Board by tomorrow. I did a proposed decision by Exhibit J, you can revise it, of course, but I already did a proposed decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, why not?
To the extent you want to hear from me.
Sure.
I think one way, the court, as you all discussed your possibilities and what you may do, one course action for the board could be, is a letter to DEQ to say, hey, we've got concerns from constituents, they're worried about location, and if this places in compliance, and whether it's meeting the effluent limits, for lack of better knowledge about this, and ask them to consider these things. I think any letter from this board is gonna be, in the county in which this facility sits, is gonna have an impact, and they're gonna have to address it, and we could encourage them to have a public comment here on this. That is a possibility for us. I will say that, and this is personal, in terms of trying to sift through all these regulations, and then what the data means, and I appreciate Mr. Alexander's efforts on this, but it became very clear to me why this is a DEQ problem set, and it's not a Madison County supervisory role on this thing.
Thank God.
Yes, so, and I think, I think we have an erosion sediment guy in Joe Sexton that can also look to see if there's an erosion issue. But I would say that this is rightfully in the province of DEQ, we can ask for them to make sure they're taking a hard and rightful look at this, and make sure people are complying with permits, but that is, I guess I'm suggesting that as an option, but of course, this action is yours, so I don't want to step on it.
This is the best option we've gotten so far. That is a good suggestion, I think that's where we need to be, I mean, listening to Jonathan, no, I'm sorry, Jonathan, bore us to death with his technical knowledge of previous employment, and then Mr. Alexander with his lawyer lingo, this is well past my capacity, certainly, and certainly past it just knowing about it for about even a week. What about going by Hanon's recommendation? That certainly would put the heat on, that would express the concern by all the citizens and neighbors that are down there, and see what DEQ will do with that. Is that right, Hanon?
Fine, I can have it done by tomorrow also, but, yeah, and ultimately, the decision's yours, I don't want to step on your toes on this.
What do you say over here?
No, I like it, I like it.
Yeah, I agree.
There will be a public hearing comment in there, though, that we would request a public hearing comment?
We would encourage them to do that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any issue? I should do a motion for this. This is a good one for the...
So moved.
There you go. Motion made and accepted, further discussion? Thank you all for coming and bringing it to our attention, hopefully, we can get something done. All in favor, signify with a same aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. There you go. All right, information and correspondence?
Unless, Kim, you want to plug the Christmas luncheon?
January 13th, or December 13th, 12th, what time?
12:20.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Public comment? Public comment? Any other public comment? We do have a closed session, thank you all for being here.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convenes a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 for personnel.